Expect something like.
Okay.
I would like.
The end.
Yes.
I would like to bring the town council meeting for April 19th, 2021 to order. Roll call please.
Yes. Councillor Schoen.
Present.
Councillor Mellon.
Present.
Councillor Gardner.
Present.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Present.
President Kulturitis.
Present. All right. Please stand for a moment in the silence and the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for everyone for attending. That brings us down to the public key, the public hearing for amending the water rates. Is there anybody that wishes to speak at this public hearing? Anybody in there? All right, I will close the public hearing. Brings us down to the public hearing, amending their refuse disposal rates. Mike. Are you?
Mike, can move eighteen thirty-three to a plane. It's just a question. In reading the documentation, are, I know the rates got to go up because everything's gone up. Are you looking at increasing it every year by four percent? Because that's in one of the documents that I was reading. Because their rates are going up annually, what they charge. You're basing the rate now that's going to start on their 2021 rate.
Are you talking about water rates?
So I'm talking about the, this is on the solid waste, this is the garbage.
Okay.
Are you looking at increasing the rates by four percent? Every year?
The price will increase by four percent every year. It's ultimately council's decision to do that. It would be my recommendation to consider it based on the cost of the contract and the cost of providing services.
Okay. That was just a question I had. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Is there anybody online, Dustin?
No.
All right, I will close the public hearing. That brings us to a public comment. In person, public comment is limited to two minutes maximum per person or five minutes for a group spokesman. These keep their comments civil and constructive to public policy issues. The chair at its sole discretion may recognize individuals wishing to speak on different topics at any time may end the open to the public session. All speakers will be timed by the clear treasurer. This portion of the meeting shall not exceed twenty minutes. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak?
Mike, can move eighteen thirty-three to a plane. This is in regards to the community crossing matching grant. Where they talked in the work was put together, he talked about traffic calm. I just, what is a mini traffic circle?
A mini traffic circle is a circle that goes into the existing cross section of the street as it exists.
So it's like a mini roundabout?
Not a roundabout because it doesn't force traffic to go around. If there's a stop sign, the stop sign would persist. What it does is it slows vehicles down who might otherwise want to roll through and gun it through that intersection. They're forced to go slower to go around that traffic impediment now. Right, so a roundabout traditionally, you think it's big, you know, you go down to Carmel, you're doing crazy eights everywhere, right? That's not what this is. It's a traffic calming device that forces you to use the existing right away. Because we have big intersections, right? Sixty by sixty by sixty by sixty at the least. If you put something in the middle, you're not able to just kind of roll and go fast. Like we all, I'm guilty of it too. You have to actually slow down.
It's sort of like a more quiet speed bump?
Well, hopefully you don't run over it.
Keep on trying, Mike, keep on trying.
Hopefully you don't run over it. If you do run over, it would be.
A big impediment.
Quite, quite the bump, quite the bump.
All right.
Is there anybody online? Did we receive any emails this week?
I did not receive any communications this week for public comment.
Great. Okay, then I will close the open to the public. That brings us down to the consent agenda. Mr. President, I move we accept the consent agenda. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
The motion.
Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero, yes.
Brings us down to old business ordinance eighteen twenty-two, the salary ordinance amendment, second reading.
There was one change from first read to second read. The park attendant position was included in exhibit C. All this would do would be to create the authority for the park board to hire that person. It does not staff the position. It only creates the possibility to be staffed if there is a need and that need to staff is urgent or pressing. Other than that, the ordinance is as it was previously presented.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we adopt ordinance eighteen twenty-two on second read.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this? Roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you. Ordinance eighteen twenty-three, water rate, second reading.
Like ordinance eighteen twenty-two, there is a small change from this version from the previous. And that is in the minimum monthly billing. Those numbers, I believe, were decreased by, increased by ten percent, ten cents per month. And that was to create agreement in the metered billing and the monthly mediums. But substantive changes, there are none.
Thank you. Say you counsel.
Mr. President, I vote, sorry, I move that we adopt ordinance eighteen twenty-three entitled an ordinance amending schedule A, a non codified portion of municipal code amending fees for water utilities on second read.
I will second that motion. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
Councillor Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Brings us down to ordinance eighteen twenty-four, refuse collecting, collection rate, second reading.
There are no changes from the first read to this ordinance.
Mr. President, I will make a motion that we adopt eight ordinance eighteen twenty-four. It's entitled an ordinance amending schedule A, a non codified portion of the municipal code amending fees for the refuse disposal on second reading.
I'll second the motion.
All right, any discussion on this?
Mr. Anderson, the only thing I would ask is, I know we are doing a cost of service study for sanitary sewer rates and things like that. Is that also going to take an effect some of our operation and efficiency with the leaf and branch collection?
That would not be within the prescribed scope to the consultants. Certainly, we can look at that if you'd like.
However, most likely that's reviewed pretty much on a annual basis by staff, public work staff and yourself.
It is a hot topic of conversation both inside the building and out.
I guess it's more just efficiency and making sure that, that staff has the ability to, if it's altering plans or changing plans or having new ways of doing something from a staff level, so.
Sure.
That's fine.
What say you? We did.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That was my discussion phase.
All right. Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, two, zero.
All righty.
We're ready for new business.
New business ordinance eighteen twenty-five amendment two to two thousand twenty-one salary ordinance, first read.
In this case, I would ask, as we discuss it, that we would write the readings and pass this on first read. What this is, this is an extension of the internal town muster policy to allow town muster employees to go into the negative like leave balances should they have COVID. And we have had a handful of employees take advantage of this. And we have one that would be impacted by payroll on Friday, which is why I would ask that we make the decision this evening. And what I'm asking is if you would extend it another three months, you would consider.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the rules, waive the readings and adopt this ordinance on this first reading as it was presented.
Do you have a second to this?
I'll second.
Any discussion to this?
You said a clarifying question, Wendy. You said that they can go negative if they have COVID, but I think they're all, they don't have to be affected themselves.
Exactly. If they are impacted by COVID, if they are quarantined as a result of COVID, then yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just a clarification, I prevent that. They don't personally have to have it, but if they're home for COVID related. Anything, it's something, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Great idea. I'll find it during this every quarter should be something we should be looking for next year or so. All right, roll call.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, two, zero.
Brings us down to change order number thirteen, forty-fifth grade separation project. Mr. Lee online?
Yes, sir, this is Lee Randall with DLZ.
Hello, Lee.
Good evening. So change order thirteen, this is related to the steel casing for a jack and bore for the storm sewer underneath CN Railroad. With that work, there was some added work and additional costs resulting from CN. So during that operation, groundwater was encountered and that water was transferred through the casing itself. At that point, CN stepped in with their concerns of water infiltration as well as potential tracks. And ultimately, their biggest concern, of course, is derailment. So as a result of that, they required that the steel casing be extended further north. The operation began on the south side, it was being pushed to the north. And then an additional steel bulkhead instead of a timber bulkhead was required as well. So that during that waiting period for the shoe fly to be then moved to its main line alignment once the underpass was complete, could then be removed and then that work completed. So as a result of this, the total change order cost pending council approval is $10,426.93 for your consideration.
Thank you, Lee.
Mr. President, I move that we approve change order number thirteen for in dot contract B three six two two nine in the amount of $10,000, $10,426.93.
Is there a second?
I will second that motion.
Any discussion on this?
Now, the only thing I would ask, once we're completed with all these change orders, a couple of months ago, he's, Mr. Randall sent a nice detailed list of all the change orders that were completed and the three or four that were still ongoing. If we could update that documentation to set it out.
Sure, we have another set of change orders at the May meeting and I will include an updated change order matrix then, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Council President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Brings us down to change order number nineteen for forty-fifth grade separation error and omission design plan related.
Okay, so change order nineteen was a result of the added or missing phases associated kind of with change order seven. If you will, we had added maintenance of traffic phases on Calumet. So with that, with those changes, construction changes to the plans was a temporary inlet at the northwest corner of Calumet Forty-Fifth as well as some additional pipe length. So that storm water could be maintained at the intersection during the construction. Now unfortunately, as construction progressed, that intersection was broken up into many small little phases. So we could not go in afterwards and remove that length of pipe extending from the northwest corner to the southwest corner. Therefore, it had to be filled with a drought material. So that was pumped into place between those two corners and then those pipe sections abandoned. So this change order, the unit price on this is about $29 less than NDOT's average price. So it's almost half of what we would typically see on NDOT contracts. So the total change order cost pending council's approval is $3,840.06.
Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve change order number nineteen for in die contract B three six two two nine in the amount of $3,840.06.
Do you have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion on this? Roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, two, zero.
Brings us down to change order number twenty-six for the forty-fifth race operation, change condition rail related.
So this change order is for the added maintenance of traffic on Forty-Fifth Street. As I'm sure all of you are aware, there were railroad and utility delays in 2019, which then forced acceleration for the completion of Forty-Fifth and opening the traffic in 2020. Unfortunately, not all of those painting and coating operations at the retaining walls and the underpass were able to be completed late last year. So this change order represents the maintenance of traffic in order to restrict each lane on Forty-Fifth at the underpass to one lane each direction, allowing one switch and also a duration up to four months in order to complete those painting and coating operations, which include the architectural surface treatment of those walls, the coloring at the east walls, walls three and four, anti graffiti coating at all the retaining walls as well as the underpass walls and concrete sealer for the retaining walls and the underpass walls. The total cost of this change order pending council approval is $2,177.74.
Mr. President, before I make a motion, I just want to clarify, I think, Mr. Randall, you said four months, up to four months. It's tech, I think it's four weeks, is that correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, four weeks, one month, yes, my apologies.
Okay. Then I would make a motion that we approve change order number twenty-six for in die contract B three six two two nine in the amount of $2,177.74.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
My question for Mr. Randall is, what is the expected time? I mean, when, when will this work happen?
Actually, it started last week, to be honest. So they started, they restricted the westbound lane, the right lane at the underpass. The, I want to say maybe Monday night, Tuesday morning last week. So work at wall four, which is adjacent to the alley, has begun already. And tomorrow, they are expected to restrict the eastbound right lane so that they can begin work on that opposite wall. So we are essentially one week out of three weeks to date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call please.
Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
That brings us to two thousand twenty-one dash one, community crossing matching grant proposal for engineering service.
Yep, so we have been very successful with the community crossing matching grant program. This is for the first two thousand and twenty-one project, which will be the second construction project in two thousand twenty-one. And if that's intentionally confusing, I would direct your comments towards indot. But this is for River Drive, North Delaware Parkway, East Delaware Parkway and Potomac Drive.
What was the last?
Potomac Drive between Washington Circle and North Delaware. So largely in Independence Park and then a portion of River Drive that needs some water, water, water main replacement. As has been the case in previous mobilizations for community crossings, staff recommends engaging with S H to do the design work for this. We have found them to be responsive and professional and their bid estimates very reliable. So this evening, we would like to ask again your permission to engage with S H of Indiana to work on the design elements of this tranche of funding from indot for those streets for a lump sum fee not to exceed fifty-one thousand on tasks one point one through one point one four and task two at an hourly rate for a cost not to exceed twenty-one thousand. So seventy-two thousand in total of design work before you have a potential change order. And I have to say, S H have been very good with these projects. There have not been change orders on the design work. They've been highly responsive and professional again. So happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Are you planning to do some speed, speed control projects in other parts of town? Is this sort of a first step or are these all ones that?
It's something we're going to look at. One of the things that we have heard as a group, you've all been copied on the emails or had residents reach out to you, is what are you going to do about the traffic on my street? And when I follow up, when staff follows up with these residents invariably to a person, to a concern, it's not the fact that there are cars that they don't recognize on their street. It's that the cars are traveling at an incredible and inappropriate velocity. So thinking about, this is an issue that has been present. This is an issue that you are constantly, that's brought to your, your attention as elected officials. And every year, we apply for money to indot to repave streets. And every year, we repave streets and we replace those streets in the exact same condition that caused the concern for people to write you. And it seems to me there has to be a better way to design that mousetrap. Because if we're spending money and we're getting free money, well, essentially free money from the state, we ought be creating an environment that addresses one of the overlaying concerns of not just, you know, general asset condition, but the quality of life and how those residents experience those vehicles on their street. So this is a, this is an attempt to start that conversation. Is it going to be transformative? I don't, this is, this is a first step on what I would hope would be a broader community conversation about what is contextually appropriate? What do people really want to see in their built environment? And maybe they enjoy speeding in their own neighborhood. And when you say, I would like to do these interventions, the neighborhoods will say, actually, no, please don't do that. And then we can say, we had a conversation with you when you complained and this is the built environment that you prefer, right? But it is, it's an attempt to have that conversation. So that's kind of the genesis behind that.
Oh, yeah, for the, so the traffic calming, just to confirm, will be on the River Drive portion? Only not in the other areas that we're working on?
Yeah, I think to be determined. I mean, that, that is a design element that we're going to look at. And again, this is just design. This is, this isn't out for bid. If we look at and say, yeah, actually, that's not a great idea, then it won't be at River Drive even. But if we look at it and everyone thinks, oh, that's a really good idea, we should have a broader conversation. It could be in future incarnations of this.
Right, and the scope of this work, though, is the design work just on the River Drive portion.
Yeah.
Yeah. And by late June, it looks like, or mid, yeah, late June, that we'd see some proposed traffic calming, calming options of drawing of a traffic circle, for example, with that. Or mini traffic circle. Is that, is that correct? So we'll start to see like, so residents can start to envision what.
Right, so input on traffic would be in late June. So that means we're going to receive input. We're going to, we're going to show and tell. So on a, on a parallel track elsewhere in the town, you have authorized Tuscan and Sam Schwartz to look at some kind of form types of streets around the streetscape. Because the concern was, well, all, all good and well that you're investing in Ridge and Calumet, that's just going to move traffic elsewhere. Well, wisely, you as a body said, well, let's look at that and make sure that doesn't happen and we're prepared. And what we're doing is we're going to extract some of that learning and apply it throughout town now. And this is a, this is a step towards that, right? So broadly speaking, you know, that area in the northeast, northwest corner of town, you know, you got a certain width, you got a certain number of cars that go by. You got a certain average daily traffic speed in the speed bins. And those aren't unique to that, you could apply those elsewhere, right? So if you have three things that work and you talk to the public and say, hey, these three things work, what do you want, right? Maybe it's a chicane, maybe it's a bump out of an intersection, maybe it's a traffic circle. You know, there are the, the right tool in the right place, but also with the input from the residents.
Okay. If anybody wants to see some examples, the town of Village of Lansing has installed a number of mini traffic circles at intersections. I can tell you for sure that it slows traffic down.
You, you didn't go over, Councilman Schoen, okay.
We got a fellow who tried to go over the circle of forest in Broadmore. Putting mud tracks right across the center of it. And that was the town where he did it, made a higher curve. And he did it one more time. But only one more time. So, yeah, it has to have a high enough curve. I assume these will, these will also consider implications on snow removal, I mean, that's.
Without a doubt, without a doubt.
Lots of times people ask for speed bumps and that makes it difficult to plow snow.
Speed bumps do make it difficult to plow snow. Speed bumps also encourage speeding in between the speed bumps. Yeah, so hopefully we'll find the right tool in the right spot.
I don't know how many different options we're going to look at, or if that's all part of the.
I think that's part of the design.
I think it's safe to say that speed bumps will not be any of the solutions, correct?
I would hope not.
Okay.
If I could put my finger on that scale.
I think that's safe to say that the speed bumps won't be an option.
Okay.
They bother the people who are law abiding and going the right speed.
All right.
I don't have a motion yet.
We haven't gotten to it, we, we already started the discussion before that.
I would make a motion that we accept S H's proposal to complete the engineering work on task one and task two on an hourly basis for not to exceed total of seventy-two thousand dollars without prior authorization from the town of Muster.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Roll call.
All right, Kent, or Councillor Schoen?
Present.
Yes or no, please? Let's turn over.
Let's turn over.
On the motion before us regarding community crossing matching grant. Councillor Schoen.
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Mellon.
Yes.
Councillor Gardner.
Yes.
Councillor Tulowitzki.
Yes.
And Council President Kulturitis.
Yes.
Five, zero.
Thank you. Brings down to well field balancing proposals. So you want to tackle this? It is very close.
I'll, I'll jump in here. He comes.
We have, we have a guest star this evening.
My name's on this memo, that's before you, so I guess I'll jump in and mention, Dustin can assist as necessary here. The, as you're aware, the Centennial Park landfill is, is definitely a landfill, a gas energy facility. And we had a meeting here last month with.
And we had a meeting here last month with all the various contractors and staff that's involved. It was a, it was a full house, twenty plus people involved in that meeting. It's, it's to do, to, to get a little bit of background on everything to do with the landfill and the operation of transforming the methane from that landfill into power. One of the things that we really talked about were best practices and the industry best practice that we really want to concentrate today on what's before you is to balance the well field. If you're not familiar, many times the, it, it's become frequent that the generator is down very, very frequently. It is, it is routine, unfortunately for us, which has really made it difficult to project consistent revenues as well as. Project the eventual future maintenance, replacement, and many of the other things that go hand in hand with those types of activities. So what we have before you is from Cabino Environmental Field Services, there's two different proposals. One is for balancing of the well and. Field that is out there, the, to make sure that we can better get a handle on the, the operations of the facility. And have a better consistent flow of methane to the generator to keep it running. Just as a, for instance, the, the generator went down Christmas Eve this past year and it was out. Ended up being in early February when we got it back online. So it was, it was about a six week time that the generator was down. The, from the Cabino folks, they had indicated to us that if we would have had something like this in place, we would have, very likely would have prevented that. Turn down of the generator for that six week period of time. So by looking at this again, with, with the projected best practice that we're looking at is a monthly balancing and monitoring of the methane. Well field as well as the second part of this is a time and material basis for any repairs that are beyond that normal scope, beyond that monthly scope on, on a basis there. So you have two different proposals. One shows the hourly rates that they would charge if they're called out in essence beyond that normal day to day, that one trip per month. And the other one is the monthly cost, which is two thousand one hundred twenty dollars per month that they would be coming out to visit and do their work on that.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve the attached proposals dated on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. From Cabino Environmental Field Service for one, the monthly balancing and monitoring of the methane well field at Centennial Park landfill. And then two, the time and material basis for any repairs that are beyond the monthly scope.
There are second?
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Is, is part of the operation review that you're doing, that you had the meeting with a couple, you know, a couple of weeks ago? Is that also to kind of clarify the revenue and potential expenses of this? In a long term or medium range, long term result of this?
That is really the ultimate goal and probably the reason for that, that meeting initially being called was because the, the anticipation is that. It's going to require the town invest in probably a six figure generator rebuild in the next few years. And the, the experts that we have at the table for us at the town. With the numbers that this will present us will be able to get us better handles and better options for us when that time comes. So that'll, that is one of the goals there to, to get to that point and hopefully. It, it'll present us in that matter where these, these folks, what to my surprise was when we brought the, the number of these contractors in there. They all know each other from dealing with each other on other landfills. It was us who, at least from my standpoint, I should say, me, didn't realize they all knew each other as well as they did. So I, I think it was, it was long overdue to have that conversation. And did want to point out just as well that this, these, this, this is projecting and this would be paid for out of the solid waste money as well. That was in that memo as well.
Thank you. You have other questions?
Mr. Heinz, I'm wondering, do we know what the historical revenue figures are for this generator?
I jumped off the top of my head. I, I can tell you that for the month, the full month of December, it was almost thirty thousand dollars. I, I shouldn't even say the full month, it was down Christmas Eve, so, but for that month, it was thirty thousand dollars. So taking that out to a twelve, twelve month figure, three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Those are known numbers, but I don't know if we could provide those off the cuff. If you're interested, we'd be happy to provide those to the council.
I'm just trying to get a sense for the monthly maintenance cost, looks like twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five, four forty per year. So it sounds like less than one month, typical one month revenue for this. You said there was a six figure rebuild coming, so I'm trying to get a big picture of, of the operations there. And my other question is, what is the environmental benefit beyond, beyond any sort of revenue that the town might generate from the coverage?
The. To operate it with the increased runtime will help with the, the various other issues that'll include odor complaints. The general, you know, from the neighbors, from the general public, and it'll lead to leakage, breakouts, subsurface oxidation, the underground fire potential, potential for offsite migration. So those are all things that we do have to do. And we as a town are locked into doing because of it being a landfill in the state of Indiana. So with all the various reporting requirements that we do have, this is, this is a step in that right direction to make sure that we have kind of some bare bones. Figures built into that equation, so when the time comes to report all those various items that we have that available to us to, to help define those issues.
So these are mitigations that we need to take or at least measurements that we need to have each year, which on itself would have a cost. But by operating this generator, it sounds like it is supposed to be a net positive financial benefit to the.
That, that is the hope and eventually, at, at some point, it will run out of having a, producing enough methane where it won't be able to power up generator any longer. At that point, it would be exclusively a flare operation, but it would, but even if at that case, I think it's, it's like a hundred years we have to operate and take care of this for, for the life. Or since the closure of the landfill, so.
Thank you, that was helpful information.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Scoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero.
Brings us to Public Works purchase of a Vector twenty-one zero zero I combination sewer cleaner.
Yeah, so I would like to thank our Clerk Treasurers Office and Public Works Department for collaborating on this. The Vector is probably one of the unsung heroes in the town of Munster for the amount of work it does. It is a workhorse, so we do a, a significant amount of hydro excavation, which is basically washing dirt away and sucking it up so we can get at water main breaks. It's also helpful doing physical locates. We would use it to jet sewer lines, storm sewers, water mains. I mean, it, every day you could find something to use it for, for eight hours or more. And what we would suggest is purchasing a second one to do just that. So prolong the life. The, the Vector is a very significant piece of equipment, not only for the amount of work it does, but for as technically complex as it is. And it's not the kind of thing that you want to be caught without. Now, we have had instances where it's been down or out of commission for repairs and we've been able to, to thankfully borrow neighboring communities. And likewise lend ours out, like we're all, we're all good neighbors. But there have been times where it could have been an emergent situation where we would not have been able to respond as effectively as we normally could have. So the idea is normally when we have a piece of equipment, we'll trade it in. This one, we would suggest not trading it in and leaving the existing one for some of that more rough work that would. Perhaps wear on parts and, and prolong the life of the newer one. So again, would like to thank the Public Works Department and Clerk Treasurers Office for putting together the lease purchase quote summary. Great collaboration, cooperation between those two departments. And based on the analysis of the two lease purchase options, we would suggest the. Option from publicfinance.com in the amount of four hundred thousand seventy, four hundred seventy-two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. Finance over seven years with the first payment in advance upon vehicle delivery and yearly thereafter of seventy-three thousand dollars.
Mr. President, I would make that motion.
There are second? Dustin, and this is the vehicle, this vehicle is available holding your force.
It is, so there is a timeliness to this, this request. Like everything else, I was listening to NPR and they, they're running out of bubbles for the bubble tea. You can't buy a laptop because they're out of microprocessors, everything else. Apparently you can't buy a back truck now. We have cultivated a relationship and they have this one with our name penciled in with your permission this evening. It will be ours, it will take six months to build and take receipt, but our place in line is still set.
All right, roll call.
Counselor Scoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five, zero.
Brings us down to FAA public declaration letter for the Police Department drone program.
I think I can explain. The Police Department has obtained at least one drone that they want to be able to use. And they, that was obtained, I think, as part of body cameras. And so in order to use those, to use a drone for. Crime fighting, public safety sorts of things, you need approval from the FAA that also involves how close we are to the Lansing Airport. The first step in getting approval for the, from the FAA is this public declaration letter. Which I'm asking for your authority to send out tomorrow, it hasn't been sent out yet. That basically says, we understand, we're not going to use this for any commercial purpose. And that the town's use of the drone for compensation or for hires beyond the scope of what is permitted by the FAA. And we have to publicly declare that, that's to come from your attorney, not from internal staff. So Chief Shekel and Damon asked if I would present that to you and get your approval to send this letter so the FAA will approve their use of the drone.
Just, so, are you wanting some?
A motion to authorize me to send a letter that's attached to the medal.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to authorize Attorney David Westland to send the public declaration letter of the town of Munster. For the purpose of applying for the authorization certificate to operate unmanned aircraft for the Police Department.
There are second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? We're just getting one, we're going to get two.
I'm not sure if it's one or two, I think it's two, but I don't, Chief Shekel was here, you guys.
All right, okay. I believe from conversations with Lieutenant Johnston, it is two. And the Police Department is open to collaborating with other departments for the use of those drones for many different applications. Could be very useful for any number of municipal services.
All righty, so. Did I ask it? We're. What are we, what are you, what are we declaring here?
That you're not going to lease it out for, for hire?
Okay, but we can use it by other departments.
Yeah, I don't think you can get compensation for that, but that would be part of usually, so.
Parks Department, Public Works Departments.
You can use it for that sort of thing, you just can't.
Take it off for.
Like rent it out.
Or can't charge pictures for it if we take pictures or something, whatever. But again, from, from a, from a public standpoint, using that by municipal government to use it for other things is going to be okay.
That would be fine under the federal regulation that's cited, it's just not renting it to somebody else.
Understand, okay.
Any other question? Roll call.
Counselor Scoon?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes.
Counselor Gardner?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And President Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero.
There are no reports tonight? Are there any portfolio reports anybody would like to bring up?
I've been announced that the Munster Parks and Recreation Summer brochure will be distributed very, very soon. Mark, is it going to be by next week?
We hope so and it's already on the town website.
Good. All right, that brings us down to announcements. All town council meetings will begin at seven P M on this other white noted. There's no meeting on April twenty-sixth, May, May third, we have a river town council redevelopment meeting. No meeting on May tenth, May seventeen, we have a river town council redevelopment meeting. There are no meetings on May twenty-fourth or May thirty-first. That brings us down to adjournment. Someone, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 This meeting's adjourned, thank you for attending. All right, we're going to move right into the redevelopment commission regular meeting for April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scoon?
Present.
Commissioner Mellon?
Present.
Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Present.
And Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present. That brings us down to open to the public, is there anybody who wishes to speak tonight? Anybody online, Dustin?
Yes, sir.
All righty. We'll pull it open to the public, that brings us to consent agenda.
I will make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
There are second?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Scoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Nothing on their old business, on their new business, we have four zero seven dash four one one Ridge Road appraisal contract.
So this is the parcel, parcels immediately south of where Nick D intends to put their platform for the railroad station. And immediately west of the plaza that is currently owned by Mr. Prisco. Where Danny Z's, not Danny Z's, but Marcos and Bombers and Shanti Wellness are. The applicant, the owner of that property is having some challenges complying with the zoning as it exists. It's been talked about many times. The representative of that client, Mr. John Reed. And I discussed the possibility of perhaps selling that parcel to the town. To even have a conversation about that, we would have to have an appra, two appraisals. So what we have here is you're asking your permission to have those appraisals before we have a conversation about that.
Thank you, Dustin. I would make a motion that we authorize the town manager for two appraisals for the properties at four oh seven four eleven Ridge Road. There are second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion?
I assume since we're this far, the owner has expressed that he's potentially amenable or interested in such a transaction.
The owner is aware that his, his counsel has had that conversation.
Okay, could be a strategic, albeit small lot of land given development around there, so.
It could be.
Good, good to know what it's worth.
Yes.
Roll call.
Commissioner Scoon?
Yes.
Commissioner Mellon?
Yes.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Tulowitzki?
Yes.
And Commissioner Kulturitis?
Yes.
Five to zero.
There are no reports, no announcements, and brings us down to adjournment. Will we adjourn? There are second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned, thank you for attending.
Thank you, all department heads for attending, I very much appreciate it. Have a good evening, we'll see you later. I did.
Shanti and Vanderwood were both online.
Could I ask more questions?
Can I ask more questions?